Wendy, can you confirm that you can hear okay?
Yes, I can hear.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd say we're close enough on that. Call our meeting to order if you would join us in the pledge to the flag as we get started.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'll just go through a few announcements. If you are comfortable and adequately socially distanced, you can remove your mask if you would like to. We do ask that if you are up and moving around the room, coming to the microphone or anything else, that you would put your mask on for that. Obviously, our meeting is a combination virtual and in-person. It's about the ninth or 10th meeting. We've done that way. The agenda was posted on the township website along with instructions for how to join the meeting by video, phone, or in-person. The meeting is being recorded. It will be available on the township website, as will the written minutes, once they're approved by the board. There will be two opportunities for public comment. That may be virtual or in-person. After being recognized by the board, if you're in-person, we would ask that you come up to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing the board. If you are joining us virtually, if you can get Todd's attention by hand raising or whatever, we will try to get you in for comment as well. The manager is monitoring the virtual meeting. He's able to determine participants by phone and video. With that, we'll do a self-introduction of the board members. And we are again separated away from the podium here, so we can do some social distancing. Jeff?
Jeff Rogers.
Bob Brown.
Dave Rose.
Art Rutledge.
Jeff Roan.
And to my left is Todd Ziegler, the Township Manager. To the windows up there, we have Wendy, our Recording Secretary, and Tim Bupp, our Solicitor, is joining us virtually tonight, too. So, welcome to all of you. With that, we can move back to the agenda. I'll begin with approval of the minutes from our April meeting. Are there comments or questions on the minutes?
Make the motion to approve the minutes for one second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the April minutes. Are there any further comments? We shall vote, beginning with Jeff.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. The minutes are approved. We'll move to the Treasurers' Report for the month of April. Are there any questions or comments on that? I think, Todd, there was one change in the account, and that was about the middle of the second page for income where we changed transferred to hydro hydrants. That was actually a bond.
That's correct. For the Messina Highlands, for the landscaping bond that we were holding, you recall, we had that worked on, so those funds were transferred into the township's account.
Any other questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Treasurers' Report. Any further questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. The Treasurers' Report is accepted. We've moved to the first opportunity for a public comment. First, on our list that have requested some time were Wayne and Kathy Raymeyer. So, if one of you wants, or both of you want to step up to the... Looks like he's yielding to you. If you can get as close to the microphone as you can.
Okay.
We can tilt it down.
You can tilt it. There you go.
Okay. Can I kick this down now?
You may, if you wish, yes.
So, I'm Kathy Raymeyer, 359 Strawberry Road, New Freedom, Pennsylvania. So, Wayne and I, you probably know this already, have our farm for sale on Strawberry Road. Two sides of our property is currently in development, and the other side has Miller Park. And then the other side is, I think it's in clean and green. So, three sides have public coming and going. And we have noticed an increase of folks coming up to the fence, approaching the horses, wanting to pet the horses and all that stuff, and it's fine, but there's a liability issue that we're kind of concerned about there with the more the population, the more the chances somebody may get bit. They're not getting in the fields yet. Hopefully, they won't, but there's that possibility. So, that's just a little background that why we're selling. We want to just take what we have now and move further out in the country where there's less chances of someone possibly getting hurt with their animals or coming onto the property unexpectedly, and so that's what we're trying to do. So, to make our property more appealing, we were hoping to have the receiving area changed from rural residential to suburban residential, and we were hoping that you folks could help us with that.
Okay. Are there any questions before the board maybe discusses it? It is up on the board. What, just so the board is focused, all we would really do is decide we would not be in favor of moving forward, or if we would be in favor, it would then go to the Planning Commission. It would have to go to York County Planning Commission. There would have to be a public hearing. So, this is kind of the first step of either the red light or green light as to whether it even proceeds any further. That's what we've been looking at. I would just comment, I'd be very concerned that it looks like spot zoning, and that's not legal. I believe that's how others might look at it, but that's... I'm not an attorney, so that's my opinion as I look at it there. Are there any questions or issues from the comments, question from the board? It is, actually, it is, I believe, Royal, aren't they looking for, yeah, it's Receiving District.
Yeah, it's.
And Suburban is Receiving, right, right. It's, yeah, Residential Receiving now, and they would look at Suburban Residential.
Hamilton's Overlook is that triangle piece, isn't it, to the southwest?
Correct.
Yes, that borders that.
That residential area was built in the rural residential receiving area.
Correct.
Yeah, if you recall, rural residential receiving at one point in time, until probably four years ago, maybe, only allowed on-lot septic systems, no public utilities, and you had to be on 50,000 square foot lots, and the board did do an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow higher density based on what type of utilities they had. Of course, the larger lots were for on-lot water and a well. There was a little smaller lot if you had public water or on-lots, septic, one or the other, and then, of course, even a smaller lot if you had both public utilities. So, rural residential receiving has been amended in the last couple of years to allow a higher density, you know, based on utility availability.
Okay.
And what they're proposing, the suburban residential receiving, which is the orange.
That would require the public water and sewer.
No, but you can have a higher density with those.
Okay.
Or without. And there is public water and public sewer right here, and at Hamilton's.
You're saying there's water at Strawberry, too, isn't there?
Correct.
But not septic?
Strawberry Fields has... I think they have a public sewer. Not certain of that. I know, I know Hamilton's Overlook does.
Right.
All right.
We have, right at the corner of our... My name's Wayne Raymeyer, and I live the same place she does. And there is sewer and water right at the corner of our property, at that house on the corner of our property.
Okay, so it wouldn't take too much to...
No, they just run right up there, and right behind us, which is, is that their development deal there, and they're right there, too.
Right.
I mean, we got sewer and water on both ends of us, and it was just... We're just getting squeezed out. That's the way I feel. I mean, I'm sure most of you guys know I've been a farmer up in this area forever, and every, every, every house in that end of this township, one time or another, my dad or I farmed it. So, we've seen a lot there, and it just kept coming in and coming in, and we like to not be there.
Sure.
Because I know what it is to be, try to carry on an agriculture program. When people move in, they... I mean, when we grew potatoes, they didn't like the helicopter spraying. When we grew, when I had hogs, they didn't like the hogs, and summertime, they don't like flies. They don't like smell, and I understand that. I don't care for it either. I don't care for these guys when they start spreading this chicken shit around either, because it's pretty rye, and... But we need to get away... We're, we have more of a buffer, and that's the one, and for us to start over again, it's gonna, or pick up where we leave off, is, because we have a breeding operation now, and we have cattle.
If I'm to interject, what benefits do you see changing if from rural residential receiving to suburban residential receiving? Like, from what we're seeing from the request, it's mostly just between the public water and public sewer and increased density, but I believe that's been dealt with the previous ordinance several years ago, from what Todd had said. So, it may be a moot point. I'm not sure, but what advantages do you see in change?
Well, I just see that if it's more density, then it's more appealing, because, I mean, a couple of those have approached us, and go ahead.
Just a caution, we're trying to stay to our five minutes, so if you could kind of wrap it up.
So, maybe what we need to know is what is the difference, then? We assume that in order for us to have a higher density of homes on our property to make it more appealing for development, that we would need to change it to suburban residential versus rural residential, so maybe there's...
That's correct. There's a higher density allowed in suburban receiving. What I think Todd was saying is the density today in rural receiving is greater than what it was several years ago when that was changed.
I'm gonna say maybe, probably no more than four years ago.
Right, so we enacted, the board then enacted legislation that allowed a greater density, and particularly an even greater density if you had public water and sewer in a rural receiving area, but it's not as high as the density that you're allowed in suburban receiving. So, that's basically what you're looking for. Essentially, put it in simple words, you can get more money for your land if you can have higher density.
Correct.
I think we can get the differences to summarize for you, but just if you were to look at how close together the homes are in Strawberry Fields compared to how close the homes are in Hamilton's Overlook, that would probably give you a decent idea, based on the size of your lot then, how many homes could potentially go up there, if it were to stay where it is now, which I think is what we're talking about.
Okay. You have your words to speak?
Good evening, board.
Can you get as close as you can to the microphone, if you would? It would help. You can take your mask off to speak, if you like. Okay, I just said you can take your mask off to speak, if you would like.
Steve Walker, sites number 2860 sites.
Are you here to speak on this, Steve?
Okay.
Are you here to speak on this topic?
Yes, yes, I am, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, go over what the lady just said, and I don't know if they're aware of it, but technically, that is outside the growth line on the south side of that road, no public utilities. Granted, some, one neighbor there got five sewer permits. I don't know how that happened, but it's supposed to be well in sand mound, and it keeps that way, and it keeps the neighborhood the way exactly what you talked.
You're correct.
And I agree with you, sir, about spot zoning. Thank you very much.
Okay, Steve, you're welcome. Any discussion among the board?
One of the things I'm noticing is you take Strawberry Fields now, it's actually bigger lots probably than what it would be even at the current rural residential zone. So, now you're going to, you know, you're looking at going to suburban residential, which doesn't fit at all compared to Strawberry Fields. You know, your density is extremely high compared to that. It's, it doesn't even, the suburban residential doesn't even really fit the area.
I understand.
But also, I think it's spot reasoning, which you know they're not supposed to do.
Any other discussion from the board? If we are ready to vote this, what we would be doing is voting on, basically, we don't support it, and then that's, it ends, or we would support it enough to send it to the Planning Commission, which we shouldn't do unless we have some feeling it would be supportable downstream. Are, is there any motion?
I have a question first.
Sure.
If there's gonna be a motion, are we gonna, are we picking between RRR or SRR?
No, the motion would be whether or not we would consider rezoning from what it currently is, the RR, to suburban residential. So, it would be to...
And then we send the flag.
If, if we would support that, if we would support it at all, yes.
Well, even if we approved it here, then it would go on to the next level, and then they would evaluate it again, right?
Correct.
That's, yes, that is correct. And I would support what Jeff said, is that to me, it's spot zoning, and if that's correct, I believe it is, that we're not allowed to do that. You know, you would have to probably rezone a whole lot bigger tract or something.
To follow along, would also agree, it appears to be spot rezoning, but just based on the fact that there's other developments nearby, one specifically, Hamilton's Overlook, I think they can probably still do what they're trying to do without having it reset. So, I don't think it's gonna move on, but at the same time, I don't want you to feel like that's a terrible thing, because you do have options in your current situation, but that's all I had. That said, I would make a motion to not send this to the Planning Commission and keep it as the rural residential receiving that it's currently set.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
I can second it.
We have a motion and a second. Further questions on the motion? All right, we are voting on basically not moving forward, not moving forward with any rezoning. It stays as is. Now, we shall vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, so we will not move forward in considering the rezoning, but good luck with what you're doing. You have a place there that, you know, I drive by every time I go to Miller Park, so I see it a lot and appreciate what you have there.
Yep, I've been driving by it every day, coming back from daycare, New Freedom, on my way to work, so I'm very familiar with the area and the farm as well.
I know we have some people here who want to speak to the group home, but that is on our agenda, item coming right up under ordinance and resolutions. So, I would ask that you would hold any comments on that, so we consider a resolution first on ag security. But if there's anyone here who wants to speak to any other topic other than the group home, is there anyone? Okay, then we will move forward with ordinances and resolutions. This is resolution number 2021-11, which are additions to the ag security area. So, you have a resolution in front of you. There are three areas. I think we've looked at these before.
And I just want to follow up. Jeff Reynolds had asked a question some time ago, two months ago or so. If we had approved these earlier, not these two particular tracts that belong to the holloways, that was other parcels that they had. So, these are new requests.
You're studying.
No, I'm just...
Oh, okay. Okay.
I'd make a motion to...
The only thing that has made puzzles is because one time I thought the, there was one property that they got here. I thought it was already named.
I told, we did, should have been recorded, to record our deeds, and there was nothing there.
I would have sworn that one would have been in because of the, and all that happened.
Well, I would make a motion to accept these areas into the ag securities area.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2021-11. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, we shall vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Five votes to the affirmative. Resolution 2021-11 is approved.
It's in now, for sure, Jeff.
Thank you.
I just, you know.
Thank you for that. All right, our next topic is the proposed text amendment for group homes. I would caution a little bit and ask everybody's help. One, there are a number of people who have asked to speak, so we're going to enforce the five-minute limit. Todd will time that and give you one-minute notice. I would note that this is a general ordinance. It's not site-specific, so I would hope that we can refrain from getting into conversation about water, sewer, or other things that are specific to a site. This has nothing to do with a particular site. It is an ordinance that would be throughout the township in those zoning districts where it, the actual site-specific would come when there was a use request or a change in use, and that's a pretty long time down the road, probably. But with that said, we would certainly open it up to comment from those who may wish to speak at this time. And do we have anyone? Anybody with us virtually?
See here.
Okay, given adequate time, it seems like we have nobody to address the board. If I can speak a little bit, you know, we had this go before, this proposed text amendment go before the York County Planning Commission. They recommended denial. Denial was on the basis that we were too restrictive. We had our staff look at it, and they're pretty much in agreement. They made a number of recommendations. It would be my recommendation that we send this back to the Planning Commission to reconsider, given the York County Planning Commission comments, further comments by the staff, and further input from our solicitors as well. So, if we go back to the Planning Commission, not to staff, because they've looked at this and made comments. You have their comments in front of you. And I believe that in doing that, it would be my recommendation that we ask them to really look at the legal side of this, so we don't enact something that later could come back and bite us because we were too restrictive. There are a lot of fair housing regulations that come into play, and we want to make sure that we consider those. Tim, is there anything you would add, or we?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Right, very good. I would only add that sending this back to the Planning Commission is also going to give the township and the Planning Commission the opportunity to hear from the proponents of this ordinance provision, and from their council, and from the neighboring landowners, and their council, and their concern, and it will, it'll give us an opportunity to take the time that's necessary to hash out what is apparently a very delicate issue, so.
Absolutely. I certainly concur completely with that. We are, we are still in the information gathering mode. We've just got a lot more information than we had probably a month ago to try to digest, and then we will have ample time to hear, as you said, from neighbors and from those who are interested in pursuing the group home, and that will all be considered as well, so it kind of goes through the process again. So, I'll kind of sit back and see if there are other comments from the board.
Well, that's pretty much how I feel about it. I tend to agree.
Anybody who has a different opinion? You want to put that in a motion?
I'll put that in a motion, that we send it back to the Planning Commission to take a look at it again and review everything.
And would also encourage those who are neighbors or proponents to kind of sit back and take a look, too, and be able to come forward once the Planning Commission considers it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, which said we take the added information we've gathered and send it back to the Planning Commission and go through the review process again. Are there no other comments or questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, so we will send it on back to the Planning Commission and then move forward from there.
Thank you very much. Is it your interpretation that this will be on the agenda in May, or will it be into...
This will be on the May 19th Planning Commission, and I anticipate that it'll come back to the Board of Supervisors on June 2nd.
Before you go, Steve, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, that's what I was gonna ask, one more vote before the...
Oh, okay.
So, and a couple weeks ago, it goes right back to them.
Yes, yeah, it won't put a big delay, but enough time for them to kind of review this again, so. Right here? Okay, thank you all very much. We move forward. We have a proposed text amendment. I think this is a way of just some updated information from Todd on large solar generating.
Yeah, as you recall, the board directed the Planning Commission and staff take a look at our regulations and our zoning ordinance regarding solar arrays on large farms and so forth, so we did take a look at that. Planning Commission had a very good conversation, a good discussion. Bob Brown had met with someone. He had quite a few good, important comments that were discussed as well and incorporated into this. Reason we don't have anything for you tonight is that's gonna go back to Planning Commission. They wanted to take another look at it and try to fine-tune it, but in summary, we're... But in summary, we're proposing to remove any reference to farm when it comes to solar or wind or what have you. Create two separate classifications. Alternative energy systems, which would be for private use, whether it's residential, commercial, agricultural. You could have the solar generation facilities, but it serves just that property. The other would be electric generation facility, which is the more commercial production. And then the alternative energy systems, which again would be for personal use, would be a permitted accessory use in all zones. The electric generation facilities would be permitted only in the commercial, industrial, and interchange zoning districts. Then we talked about building some of these supplemental regulations, defining those much better. And then incorporate some requirements for performance bonds, maintenance bonds, you know, during construction, and to also require agreements that at the end of the life, that they have to dismantle the systems, what those requirements are, and so forth. So I think it'll be a good, clean ordinance when it comes to the board, but just wanted to let you know, planning commission is working on that. They'll be reviewing that again on May 19th.
Right, so we should have that to look forward to in June then?
I anticipate that, yes.
Good. Thank you.
And like any other ordinance, it'll have to go through York County in a public hearing.
Correct.
The full amount, but I, I, so far, I think it's a lot of progress. I like what I'm seeing there, so I think that's.
And I appreciate Bob Brown going and talking to some folks in the industry and sharing some very good ideas that were not in our ordinance, but I, you know, we think they're important to include those, so.
Thank you, Bob. We all appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
All right. Any, any further questions on that? I guess you're going to give us a little update on our ongoing sign ordinance.
Oh, yeah, we, we are working on it, mainly keeping on the agenda, just to let you know, it's not forgotten. We are working on it. Hopefully, next month, we'll have something, at least in draft form, to present to the board.
Okay. All right, I guess next on the agenda, under subdivision and land development, we have three planned reapprovals. I don't see anything, reason why we can't handle all three in one motion, if the board so desires.
And just for those that are present and aren't familiar, the reason for the reapprovals is because they're only good for 90 days from the date that the board approves them. If it's a date beyond that, the recorder at Dean's office will not record them. So they're still good, valid plans. It's just that they're outstanding on a couple of items, so we have to renew them every 90 days.
I'd make a motion to approve all three of the conditional plan reapprovals. Should I list them, or can we just assume that they're the ones that are listed here?
They're on the agenda. I don't think they need to.
Outstanding. So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to do the reapprovals. Further comments, questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 The three conditional plan reapprovals are unanimously approved. The next item is our Shrewsbury Township, the potential Hame Town campus. And this purpose is to review and approve or disprove plan modifications. And then after we do that, we would look at approval of both the preliminary and final land development plan all at one time.
I'm happy to move, I'm happy to move that wherever is the most easy to see.
Easy to see.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your time this evening. My name is Todd Curl. I'm with RGS Associates. We are here on behalf of you guys to look at your proposed maintenance building, administration office, and just public improvements to the current Hame Town Park property.
Thank you for being here. Good to see you again.
This is the first time I've been here in front of you, gentlemen. If you, if you're familiar, Hame Town Park property, this is actually the existing building layout. But from this plan right here, you can see this is the entrance off of our main drag here. This is the existing park. So these are the existing soccer fields, the playground, the volleyball court that are here on this plan. And then up in this area is where the existing baseball field was. The backstop is now down. It's just kind of a fallow field. And it's also the existing location of at least one of your current public works buildings. There is an existing building that resides right here. And again, majority of this property right now is either fallow baseball or stone gravel parking storage. So through, through the process, we have worked with CS Davidson, the reviewers, and also with your staff to come up with a plan here that I think meets the needs of the township, both from administrative standpoint, but also from a a public works standpoint, most significantly. What you have here on the east side is the maintenance building. That's a 9,800 square foot building, which is going to have, you know, all-new amenities for your staff to be able to do the work in the township that they are needed. This building will remain, as will this gravel lot, and then there'll be a new salt storage structure on the northern end, which abuts the markets of Shrewsbury property to the north. Currently, the, the next piece of that would be the administrative building, which is just over 8,000 square feet, as well as the public parking, which sits directly south of that admin space. Like you said, the remaining portion of the park will remain untouched. We're not planning to access that or use that space in any way, shape, or form. The property to the south here is the additional stormwater facility that CS Davidson had approved. I believe you guys will be talking about it again a little bit later. And the majority of the stormwater that's generated here on this piece of the property will actually come down into what we're calling Stormwater Facility 2, which actually sits in that ravine that gets the, the stormwater that flows through it right now. So generally, that kind of in a quick overview, that's what the site looks like from, from that standpoint. We do have a handful of modifications, so you'd let me know how much more you want me to go into detail or not.
What I do is just, I might offer just a little bit for some of the people might be here for the first time, is that we have a maintenance building that's in really poor shape. The roof leaks, the heating systems don't work, and we had engineering analysis done of repair it, repair it and enlarge it or replace it. And by far, everything you looked at said, just get rid of it and replace it. I don't know if most people know, but our maintenance crew do all the maintenance work on all of our equipment, including state-required inspections. We don't send anything out. They take bodies off the trucks. They take motors out. They do that now by jacking trucks up and getting underneath of them, so this will have a lift in it. It does not have a wash bay with all the salt in the winter. It should. We will have that. And really, I think, make that group more efficient and a building that will be much more efficient for the township for a lot of years to come. At the same time, we're looking at a building here that we occupy, occupy less than half of, but we pay to heat it and all the other things that go on with it. So as an add-on, we're looking at, well, what would it take to locate the maintenance and administrative buildings together in kind of two separate entities? And we may go forward with that piece or not, depending on the cost. And we've done some analysis of what we could get for this building to sell it that would help offset that. So till we put it out to bid, which we're looking at doing, we really don't know how far it will go, but this will let us look at all those. So don't mean to steal your thunder, but I don't think we need to go in much detail. I think we can just, a real quick description of the modifications that you're looking for, that's good for the rest of the board. And we'll ask questions if we need to.
What we have right now are five specific modifications that we're looking for. Number one would be to waive the preliminary plan requirement, combining this as a preliminary final. So that, that would be, that would be number one. Number two is a traffic impact assessment. This is a current facility that is used for, for your maintenance. Traffic is insignificant. We felt that, I think we did provide a, just a very short memo to discuss that, so we're asking for a waiver of that. Number three is required reports and documents of the environmental impact assessment. Everything we're touching here has been developed, and it's either impervious or a baseball field. It's been compacted. Nothing that we're doing will, will impact any concerning, concerning areas. Number four, the sewer facilities analysis feasibility report. We did provide a kind of a short-form version of that, but with discussions with your staff and with your SEO, it was, it was found that there is no immediate plan to do any additional sewer extensions in this area. So we continue to utilize and actually what is proposed, excuse me, what is proposed is an underground septic facility. And then number five is just a modification to not require roof drain seepage pits. What we are proposing for our stormwater facility is doing the exact same thing. So what we're doing is we're taking the roof, the, the roof drains, we're taking it directly down, and it's going to be going directly to the stormwater facility, which would be water quality infiltration for those purposes.
And again, just for those here, even though as a municipality and some of the other requirements like landscaping and all, we could exempt ourselves. We are not doing that. We're holding ourselves to the same standards that we would hold any other developer, too. We shouldn't expect someone else to do things that we don't do ourselves, so we're, but at the same time, we're trying to be very mindful of the cost that's involved. These are pretty routine modification requests for this type of, I think, facility. I certainly don't have any problem with them. I'd make a motion that we approve modifications that have been described, one through five. Preliminary plan and the final plan treated together. Not necessary to do a traffic impact assessment or an environmental impact assessment, or the substitution of the drainage areas instead of seepage pits and the sewer facilities that really aren't a, an issue at this time.
I'd second that.
So a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Lou?
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. The five modifications requested are approved. And I think now you would look for us to approve the preliminary slash final plan, all as, all as one.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Are there any, any questions? We've seen this a few times, so we probably don't need to have you walk through a lot unless the board has questions or specific.
Anything I would mention is you probably want to include, make it a conditional approval contingent upon all the comments from CS Davidson's letter.
Yes.
Of April 21st.
Thank you for that. Good point.
Good point.
Hearing no other questions, I would make a motion that we approve the preliminary slash final plan in accordance with the conditions and comments of the CS Davidson letter, so dated.
I'll second that. And that's the February 23rd letter, correct?
Was that?
April 21st.
April.
An old letter. Carry on.
Oh, okay.
You know, I didn't pick up on the, the.
What was the date this time? April 21st is the date of the letter. Okay, CS Davidson.
It's February 23rd. It's okay. There's a newer letter out there. It'll be. Uh, I'm, I'm sure.
We'll see if they get one.
From Todd. It'll be okay.
Any other questions? We shall vote on approval of the plan.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. We have approved the plan.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Now, again, for those here, we're not approving any action because we still have to go through a bid and all, but we need this before we know how to put the bid together. Thank you very much. Incise and clean. We appreciate it that way.
I have one somewhat unrelated question.
Okay.
The large field area, which I guess technically would be left field of the current baseball park.
Here?
Yes. What, what are we doing with that? Is that just going to be an open field? It's going to be behind the, the building?
It's gonna, that's gonna be the site of the on-lot septic system.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's not enough to convert to another field, but it's a field that was not being used.
Had been used for two years.
Right, we didn't look at all that to make sure.
All right, thank you.
All right, so the next item would be reports, with the manager's report coming up first. You have that in front of you? Was, does Todd want us to add anything else?
It's not the most exciting because almost everything's on the agenda somewhere. Anyone has any questions other than what I have on your side?
None, so we'll move on. Again, we don't ask for or anticipate the report from a solicitor, but if he would like to say anything, he's always welcome to do that.
I just want to say that I can see all of you and hear you, and everybody that I can see looks great.
Oh, thank you.
Wish I could be there and see you in person, maybe next month.
All right. Thank you kindly, Mr. Solicitor.
We look forward to it.
Yes. We have the zoning codes enforcement, sewers enforcement reports, again, always pretty detailed. So I'll just turn it over to the board if there are any specific questions or information, may one from Todd in addition. All right, hearing none. There is a maintenance report. Obviously, the highlight of that is that line road is 70%, maybe even a little bit more complete right now with the big box covert set in place. I would just note for the record in the group that I think we've been very impressed, and Todd can speak better than me for that, by just tremendous and good cooperation between the working crews from North Hopewell and Shrewsbury Townships. They seem to be working extremely well together. I guess there's a lesson there. If we all get out of the way and let the workers do their thing, it goes well.
Remove the beer rockers.
And some very good comments have come back from Mike, from our road crew, Mike McLean, who is, was designated as the basically in-charge person and from both sides. So many compliments on the job he's done, so I hope you'll pass ours on to Mike as well. And just a, just a great job from everything that we hear and see.
Yeah, if I can just add to that.
Please, yeah.
I have a couple of photos up here just to give you an idea of the size of the crane we had to use. That's a person right there.
For people who might, no, no, this road has been closed.
Since August of, well.
July of 18.
And it's.
We had it open temporarily, but it washed out.
The bridge sits on the line between North Hopewell and Shrewsbury Township. So we got together, and a lot of the time is taken because we got a grant that paid for, I guess, a little less than half. It was a, a matching grant, so it took a while, especially with COVID, to get all the things worked out for the grant, but now.
Yeah, because the, the box, the precast box covert itself manufactured and delivered was right around 200 and, I think, $15,000 just for the box. The only thing I will add is that the maintenance supervisor for North Hopewell, when I was down there the other day, just came up to me and just said that it was a real pleasure working with Mike and our road crew, that they were very professional, great to work with. And the other thing is, we had to do bypass pumping on this, and I do know, just to, just want to share this with the board, to demonstrate the dedication of Mike McLean. One Saturday night, when they were calling for a half-inch of rain, Mike actually went out and sat in his truck down by that bridge all night long till the sun came up to make sure that the pump could keep after it. Fortunately, we didn't have the rains to cause any water problems, but I don't know if it was just fate or what, but 2:00 in the morning, the pump shut down because of mechanical problems. So he happened to be there and was able to get it up and running again and so forth, but, so I think they've done a great job. And the other photo I just wanted to show you, just to give you a sense of the size of the box. It was delivered in nine sections, and then the end walls were delivered separately. But again, you can get a sense of the size of those sections, you know, when you pair them. get a sense of the size of those sections, you know, when you compare them against the, the workers there. So.
And again, other than setting the box in place in order to do this and save as much money as we could, because the grant was, I think, 100,000, the bulk of all the rest of the work has done and is being done by maintenance crews from here in North Hopewell. A lot of times, we might, you know, contract all that out, but this was an expensive project, and for both townships, we tried to find a cost effective way to do it. So our guys together have done a lot of that work. I noticed on the park maintenance, a lot of good process, a lot of completed on that list. So that's, that's good to see as well. Any?
Sit down, Ray. We're about.
Yeah, Lime Road.
Okay.
There was actually a second little bridge that we took care of ourselves, too, didn't we?
Yeah, this is the, I'll call it the north crossing, the, the short road. There's another one that was out of commission, but this one actually took the road away and left the mangled pipe in place. The other one took some of the paving off, but we were able to restore that without having to replace the, the pipe or anything. So.
We might have to throw a speed card up there, keeping an eye on speed or something.
No, there's still going to be a bend in the road, so.
That one deserves a big ribbon cutting once it's done.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions on the maintenance report? You have the engineering report. Are there any questions or comments on that? Not a lot has changed on that since the last one. I don't think we have Stan with us, so we don't have anything from the emergency management side. That means to me, all things are going well. So that's, that's good. And Todd has been in touch with Stan as we go, as we go through the building potential as to what they would need in the emergency management room and making sure we're covering their needs as well, because they would still have a room in any new facility. Any questions on the planning commission and zoning hearing board report?
Just to back up a quick second, you mentioned the emergency room preparedness, what have you. Do, are we getting, is there anything else we need for that? Are we receiving funds from anywhere that could get us anything that we may or may not need to be prepared in the event of an emergency?
No, I think my understanding from Stan is they're pretty well equipped over here.
Okay.
Now, when we move into the new building, it's, it's going to be a little less space than what they have. So I just jumping ahead here a second to the American Rescue Plan, where the township's going to be getting approximately $665,000, and emergency management is eligible expense. So we, we're proposing about $5,000 toward that to give them the opportunity, you know, there may be some cabinetry or something that they could, you know, might.
Make better use of that space. Sure. Okay. That, that's what I was, I guess, alluding to as far as additional funds coming in, if there's anything that, that we need on the emergency side of things.
Mentioned that. I got a question. What about a generator down there? Is there one down there now? Are we having plans for one? Because we got one here now.
There will, the, the new building, you mean?
Yeah.
It is proposed for a generator.
Okay, I didn't.
Yes.
The whole, the whole building.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike's been very active in specifying exactly what type, what's needed, and what would be going in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, because we, we had talked about, there was the option for natural gas as we have here, or diesel. And Mike looked into a couple of things, and actually using diesel generator versus natural gas will save us about, I think it was $100,000.
Yeah.
And Mike, Mike, Mike thinks the diesel will work fine, so that's what we're proposing to go with. Plus, you know, if there's ever a, a natural gas line that ruptures, it's not going to do anything good anyway. So, yeah, so.
All right. Anything else there? The next topic or committees, if you all remember, we established three of those at our last meeting, the American Rescue Plan, and I'll let Todd or Jeff talk a little bit about that, that had, has had its first meeting. The official map has had some preliminary meetings when we'll have a full committee meeting when a little bit more work is done, and the sewer committee will have its first meeting tomorrow. So at the American Rescue Plan, we twisted Jeff Rogers' arm pretty far behind his back, and he said chair instead of uncle. So he has accepted that chair, but I think Todd is kind of in our note taker and note keeper. So I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, I can just briefly, if you want me just run down through these.
Go ahead, please.
First of all, for those who aren't aware, the township is going to be receiving about $665,000 in direct funding from the federal government under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. 50% of that will be received this month, and the other 50% will be received May of next year, '22. The funds are available, that we can use them through 2024. The, the premise is that it has to be COVID related. I didn't come up with the list, some of these things, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if they're necessarily COVID related, but they, they seem eligible. One thing is communications. Of course, that's to allow people, you know, not to come into public meeting rooms and so forth. So we will be eligible, the way it appears that we can use some of that funding in the new building for audio visual, visual and recording. One of the big ones is lost municipal revenue. If you have earned income tax that has been down from previous years, and what they're doing is they're using the base year of 2019. So in 2021, all the way through '24, if there's anything that would be related directly to COVID, such as earned income, because people weren't working as much, building permits, things such as that, our building permits are up, our earned income tax is up. We have not lost any revenue due to COVID. One area where we did lose revenue is our liquid fuels funding, which we receive based on the gas tax. So of course, with people driving less last year, that's been down, and our 21 allocation is down to the tune of roughly $48,000. So we would be able to use a portion of 665 to rebuild that, replenish that fund up to what our allocation was in 2019. One of the items we're going to talk about here on the agenda shortly is water and sewer infrastructure. So we're able to use some of this funding for stormwater basins, recreation. We are proposing to possibly add some additional acreage to Miller Park. So we put some money in there potentially. We should be able to get a refund, reimburse the township for the parking lot at Windy Hill, the construction materials. We are looking, I don't know if we can recover labor costs or not. Emergency management, we talked about, they have an option there for premium pay during the peak of the COVID. Volunteer organizations, if the board chose, they could give some funding to volunteer organizations such as fire companies, senior centers, food banks, human services. And then also with the building, hands-free fixtures, lobby, the seating, social distancing related items. And then one of the other major categories that are eligible is broadband extension and improvements. So that's just a, a quick overview. As I had mentioned, an important thing to remember is we're receiving the funds, half of them now, half a year from now, but we have until 2024 to extend those funds. So this will certainly be a fluid document that's going to be changed and amended, I'm quite sure as time goes on.
I think a good summary, the, the committee consists of myself, Jeff Rogers, Mike McLean, and, and Todd. And obviously, this will probably be a four-year ongoing effort. In the end, I assure you, we will need, we will leave no money unspent.
Yeah.
If we don't spend it, it goes to another municipality that needs more. So it does have to be qualified, and I think there are a, a number of areas that, that we would qualify to be able to use up that money. I think the second committee is the official map, which we are updating. And I think that is, we actually still have two openings on that. One would be of a second supervisor. That committee now is Jeff Schu and Jessica, I don't know her last name, with C S D as facilitators, and then Keith Hunnings, our zoning officer, Todd, Mike McLean, Terry Ruby, who part-time works for us, but is the planner for New Freedom and worked for York County Planning Commission for a number of years, Andy Bobby, who does the township field scheduling, Tricia Schuster from the Township Planning Commission, and I don't know if you've got a acknowledgement that she will be serving.
Yes, she will.
And myself, and then we still have room for a second supervisor and a township resident if we find one who is interested. That will be just two meetings of that committee, just to provide input to what's been done so far on, on the map. This basically, I would explain the map, I guess, it provides input on transportation, recreation, and historical elements.
And environmental.
And environmental. And if we have it on the map, like, let's say, a road extension, maybe Windy Hill improvements, or Elm Drive, if we're extend that, or a recreation land approval, we basically get first opportunity at that, if it goes up for sale. We, we have to have an opportunity to buy it, and we have a year to do that, I believe.
Correct.
Once it goes on the official map. But it's also important, just looking at how we, one of the important areas, we're going to how we link trailways and things of that nature as well, greenways, and maybe find a way to get from here to the railway trail as well. And then the third one is a sanitary sewer committee. About 1,350 township residents have their sewer handled through Shrewsbury Borough pipelines into the New Freedom Sewer Plan. Shrewsbury Borough has a sewer authority, which we do not have any representation on, and of course, New Freedom runs the system. So for some time, we've talked about the need to find a way to have more influence and better involved. So this is one way that we're looking at doing that. That committee is Phil Robinson, Dave Rose, Todd Ziegler, and myself, and we hope to find one township resident who is served by the Shrewsbury Borough Sewer Authority to also serve on that. Basically, we have no voice now, and if you're on the sewer system, the bills keep going up and money gets added for capital improvements. We'd like to do what we can to push our way into that process. Questions on any of the committee issues from the group? Anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay. Supervisors' comments? If I can quickly mention, meetings I attended in April were the LGAC meeting, a couple meetings on the municipal complex, looking at finishes and equipment and reviewing other things. Todd and I sat on the York County Planning Committee when they looked at our text amendment for group homes, so we heard the comments that they had to say. The Township Committee, Planning Commission as well, and then we had our first meeting on the American Rescue Act. Any other comments from other board members? Anything want to say? Okay. Old business. Todd, you want to introduce the multimodal transportation funding we didn't get?
Yeah. We, if you recall, we joined up with Shrewsbury Borough to apply for a grant under the multimodal transportation fund, and that was to make sidewalk improvements in New Free, or New Free, Shrewsbury Borough and Shrewsbury Township on Main Street in the borough, and then coming down Forest Avenue to Exit 83, and then up Mount Airy Road toward Tana. The, the available funds were 48 million, and they had requests exceeding 402 million. So it was a very competitive grant program. We were not successful this time. However, the next round is open currently and closes July 31st. So I would ask the board to authorize us, along with Shrewsbury Borough, to reapply and fine tune our application.
Can I do, can I make a motion now to that effect?
Yes. You certainly can.
Then I would like to formally motion that we give Todd approval to work with Shrewsbury Borough in applying for the 2021 multimodal transportation fund program grant.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? It should be noted that we do have one grant we've already received for this from a different.
Yeah, that was from the York County Commissioners.
Right. So we have some money, and we, we believe we can get an extension on the time to use that until we hopefully might be successful the next time on this one. If not, we'll find a smaller project. In both of these, the borough is the larger beneficiary because they're doing a lot more work than we are, but it ties into the I-83 improvements and kind of walkability in that area up to where Walmart and those areas are, and all in Shrewsbury Borough. So we have a motion and a second that we authorize the township to participate in resubmittal for the next grant period. We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, this was my original motion. Okay. Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative.
I just wanted to make sure what I was voting for.
Yes, five votes to the affirmative to resubmit as Dave motioned.
Thank you.
We have a couple of sewer lien. I guess this is just some updated information.
Yeah, this is just informational. If you recall, 12131 Misty Meadow Lane Anstein, last month, we did file lien against the property for non-payment. The 11790 and 11802 Baltimore Street, the Getz property, that's actually two separate properties that are adjacent to each other. The total amount due to the township is $35,798.81. He does have the funding in place for that. It's just a matter of them getting their settlement date finalized. And according to his attorney, they're shooting for the end of this week or early next week. So I would say in two weeks, that should be paid in full.
And he's been making all the payments as he.
As, as he promised, he has been making weekly payments, correct.
It appears to be a successful conclusion of a longtime ongoing issue here. So that's great. And I guess there's another half, though. Is that right? The Anstein?
Yes. Yeah. So we'll, we'll follow up with Anstein with the letter and explain to them what our process is to give them the opportunity to hopefully get caught up and become current.
And we appreciate the solicitor's help in that process as well. Okay, exit four improvement. We'll let Todd bring us up to date, but it sure looks good.
Yeah, I, I don't have a, I don't have a lot to share because I think everyone's probably been through and has, has seen it themselves. But those that haven't, I want to give credit to Brad Dauberman. I think he's a borough resident. I'm not sure. I know he's from Shrewsbury. Nonetheless, Mr. Dauberman has been taking a pictorial diary of the project from day one, starting back in 2018.
Is he flying over it?
No, he has a drawing.
Ah.
Yes. Yeah. So he's been sharing these quite frequently on the Southern York County Facebook page, and I did send him a message and ask if he would have any objections to me sharing his videos or his photos at meetings and in our newsletter. He graciously shared with me his entire Dropbox as all the photos dating back to 2018. So we certainly appreciate that. But for those that haven't, it's just a different perspective of being up in the air and looking down on it a little bit. And this is a fairly recent photo. As you can tell, this is what we did know as the eastbound lane. You actually have to drive out into those lanes now. And then the second photo here gives you a little better view. This is looking westbound. This gives you an idea. This gives you an idea, you can see with the landscaping that they're putting in. That'll be over on this side as well. And this is where the welcome sign and the flag pole and everything will be located in this area here. The flag pole is ordered, actually supposed to be delivered, I believe, next week, and they're looking to, Kinsley is looking to install it in, I believe, mid-June.
What's the height of that pole again, Dina?
Forty feet.
And that was actually, we facilitated the purchase, and all what it actually is being paid for by the VFW, I believe.
Correct, and the Lions Club is, yeah.
Lions Club.
And I apologize, the, what's the other organization? The Rotary Club.
Rotary.
And Lions Club, they're going to actually take on responsibility of maintaining the landscape there, it's in the flag pole. The township will be responsible for the flags.
And this is one where the light is on the pole itself, correct?
Correct.
As I recall?
Yes.
And then forty feet, so that's going to be, what, twenty feet above the interstate, give or take?
I'd say at least. Well, it might even be a little more, because you can see they build that up.
Yeah.
What I really liked about this photo, just to give you the perspective of what's really taking place.
Yeah.
Right here are the two old pillars.
Uh-huh.
Walls to the.
Yeah, it's doubled, it's going to be doubled.
It's doubled, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just wanted to let you know, as you all know, that's moving along, but.
Do we have a completion date?
June or July, isn't it?
Yeah, it was.
Twenty-twenty-two?
No, no, it's supposed to be this year yet.
This summer, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they really, when you think about it, they don't.
It's been done before Roosevelt, or Mount Rose.
I said we should take bets on which one was going to get done first. Kidding, of course.
Well, I think this will be done before Mount Rose.
I think all things said, Kinsley has to be complimented on the job they did here because it's been very, very little interference to traffic.
For such a busy intersection.
I just can't imagine how you coordinate all the traffic. Todd and I were talking about that, all the traffic changes, and that you visualized all this way back when all this got started, and they do multiple projects at once, and I mean, you see progress every single day, not like driving up at Mount Rose. So I think it's going to look real good when it's done. And PennDOT is to be applauded for that because they were the drivers to get the decorative pieces done and the planting and all that, along with the civic organizations.
Okay, PennDOT is doing some of the landscaping.
Yeah, they're doing all, they're doing all that initially.
That's all part of the project.
Okay.
Yep.
Plantings and all that. Then the civic organizations are going to take, take over maintaining that. And they may, they may need a truck with warning lights on it from either the borough or the township at times. We're going to take care of the flags, properly lowering them to half-staff and replacing them with new ones and things like that when it's needed. I think we're going to get the bill for the electric for the light, but the bridges will actually have a sculpture on them. I believe it says, pursue your happiness, something like that, and that will be backlit, but I think PennDOT is taking.
Yeah, that's on the inside wall.
Right, they're taking care of that, the electric. But looking, looking great. All right, if we move on now, is that, that it, Todd?
Yes.
New business? We do have one thing with Lime Road, this is, I guess, a formality, but we need to approve a, the first change order, which was to extend the time because COVID affected the time to get the pieces itself in. There's no money associated with it, and the time has already been extended, I think, but we need to approve.
You just need to ratify that.
Because it's a contract amendment. So I would make a motion that we go ahead and approve or ratify the time extension for the Lime Road box culvert.
I'll second it.
Motion, a couple seconds. Wendy, you can choose your second. Any questions, we'll vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Five votes to the affirmative, so we have approved that extension. And Todd, we have a stormwater basin we're looking to put out for bids, I think.
Yes. As Todd Crowell was talking about earlier, and I think most everyone may have been on board when we initially talked about this, and it was designed back down here at Haintown. This is existing maintenance building, eighty-three runs across the top here. Let me share this with the folks at home quick. Eighty-three runs along across the top here, suscrined trails down here, so when you come in, parks to your left, this is our storage building. So it would actually be two basins, a smaller one, infiltration to capture the debris and so forth. Most of this water is coming off of eighty-three. We were hoping to try to do this work ourselves, but this is a busy year because we have, after Lime Road, we also have Raver Road, and we have to finish a box culvert, then into paving season and so forth. We had initially budgeted money a couple of years ago to have an outside contractor install this. It's important that we do it now because York County Conservation District, in order to amend our permit for the rain garden on the north side of the property in conjunction with the building project, and it makes total sense, they want the upstream basins in place. So what I'm asking for tonight is for the board to authorize this project to be put out for bid, and this is a project that we would be able to use funds from the American Rescue Plan to pay for.
I'll make a motion to send it out for bid.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to send the stormwater basin construction project out for bid. Any further questions or comments?
Discussion, yes. Would we be paying for that initially out of a different fund over the, and then getting reimbursement from the American Rescue?
No, we should have, if the funds are delivered in May, as they say they will be, we would be able to pay them directly out of that fund.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, and that fund basically isn't a reimbursement, but we do have to track it and basically show that we use it for qualified projects.
Otherwise, we have to pay it back.
I think if you're over three-quarters of a million, you're audited.
Correct, you're automatically.
But we will not be audited because you're under that threshold, yeah.
All right, and this is to send out for a bid, so next month likely we'll get the bid back and then be able to.
Award a contractor to, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. We are ready to bid. Vote, vote. Vote in and bid.
One dollar.
Aye.
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 Aye. Five votes to the affirmative, so we will be moving that on to be advertised for bids. And I think, Todd, you want to talk a little bit about some potential upgrade to our ability to maybe communicate a little better back and forth with citizens and do it a little bit less work for everybody?
I've been wanting this for like five years, this is great news.
Of course, as you know, we can communicate through our website. We started not too long ago a Facebook page. You know, we have our quarterly newsletter, but we were looking for a way that maybe, been thinking about for quite some time, maybe not five years, but.
I've been thinking about it for five years, yeah, maybe two or three.
Of a way that we could more instantaneously communicate with as many township residents as possible. Some of the things, in particular, that I always think of is, because it's always a big issue when trash gets canceled or postponed unexpectedly due to, due to weather, but that would be the type of thing that would happen. So people would need to sign up for it, so we would have to really publicize it again through the same outlets I just mentioned earlier, Facebook, newsletter, or website and so forth. But what it would allow people to do from their cell phones, there would be a number that would be assigned to us. The township itself does not need a phone for this to operate, it would all be computer-based for the township. But if you sent a text and asked a question about a building permit, it picks up keywords, and we establish what those keywords are, and it'll send that message to the appropriate person within the township staff, and then they'll be able to respond. And we also have the capability that someone may say, you know, I'm looking for a burn permit application. We can set that up so that it picks up that key word and it sends an automatic response back that would, you know, we could tie a link to our webpage to that particular form. So the goal is that there's a lot of things that we'll be able to answer through automation with texting, seeing people from having to make a phone call while we're here in the office. You know, same with one of the probably most common uses of this program, according to the vendor, is people filing code violations. So again, what that would do, you could set it up that it sends back an automatic response that says, you know, send us the address, you know, your name, so forth, but the thing is, we can customize it to meet our needs, if it's not just a quick cut of program.
And we can do all.
What's the price of that?
If you look on the last page, the initial setup fee is one thousand dollars, and then the annual maintenance support and so forth is twenty-five hundred dollars. There is a minimum two-year contract. After that, if we're not satisfied, sixty days notice, we can cancel that. This again would be an eligible expense under the American Rescues Plan if the board chose to go with this. I've looked at several different applications out there to communicate with people, that we could do mass communications, send out mass messages, and I think this is one of the most productive ones that I've seen so far. And I did, spur of the moment, Mark and I were in a meeting yesterday, and I sent them a quick email, they're out in Utah, and they were able to do a quick demonstration, but we can see data, you know, as far as the number of messages and what type of message and so forth. Locally, Helum Township uses this, Newport Township in Northern PA is using it, Tony Town in Maryland is using it currently, Camp Hill Borough is using it. Now, this is a company, the parent company has been in business for twenty-plus years in the GIS business, and they've been into this particular line, they deal only with government agencies. I know they cover a lot of large cities, and they've been in business, it's, I think it's three or four years in this particular field, so.
And we did speak to, with the manager at Newport, wasn't it Township?
Yes.
And they, the, I think the best way you put it is, we asked, well, would you do it again? Absolutely. So, yeah, they.
And they're a smaller township than we are. We're heading up around seven thousand, and they're a little over five.
May I make a motion to pursue Text My Gov?
Is that your motion?
Unless I need to add something to it.
Okay. Well, you said may I, so I. All right, we have a, we have a motion that we would proceed, basically, I guess, to procure this package and implement it, so is there a second to that? I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second that we proceed to implement Text My Gov. Are there questions or comments before we vote?
I have one question, I guess.
Please.
Does this also have some type of selectivity where you could decide the volume, how much correspondence you might receive, or, like, for example, I mean, I use Timothy, you know, for example, you don't want everybody texting, you know, the solicitor directly, so I just wonder if there's some type of screening.
Well, the only people you can get in touch with are those that we allow you to get in touch with.
Yeah, we can customize it, so it would just be township staff, it wouldn't be, no messages would go to township engineer or the township zoning officer or.
Or supervisors, that should go.
From what I understood as well, they're, the residents are texting to this program, if you will. It's then received electronically via the computer program, and then based on the keywords or whatever else, then it sends a notification to whoever the point person that, you know, would be for that particular thing. So that, you know, they're not directly communicating with them, but their message is then being received by the person who would need to act on it.
Or it could be an automatic response, and that's where it would save time from the staff as time goes on, you can get automatic responses to frequently ask questions, if you would.
Sure.
And that'd be beneficial to residents as well, if it's late at night or over a weekend.
Yeah, they get their, you know, response immediately, or they're going in the right direction.
Does that answer?
Yes, thanks.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. We will hopefully sit here a year from now and have a wonderful, glowing results, and could be a good reference for them, perhaps.
I feel like I should be getting a royalty or something from them, because I know I thought of this first.
All right, I think we are at the point finally, after a lot of work, where we're ready to look at authorizing advertisement for construction bids on the municipal complex. And again, it will be bid as a total package, but also bid as only the maintenance building so that the admin building is an adder, which we could decide to pursue or not to pursue. So are there questions on that?
And you're going to, there is going to be a bid that the maintenance building will be prepped for the administration building.
Yeah, yeah, the site, yeah.
Yeah, the site and everything will be prepped.
That would be part of the original bid. Good question, yes. I'll make that motion then to send it out for bid.
I'll second.
Second, you have a question?
I did have a question. So we are authorizing to bid for the maintenance building with the municipal offices area being prepped, ready to go in the event that we then move forward with that.
The site work.
So it would be in phases, basically.
Right, the grading would be done.
Okay.
Initially, because you have all the equipment there.
No, if I, I think what your question is, the bid will go out, the base bid.
Right.
Is for the maintenance building and all the site prep work. And then there'll be an ad alternate bid to include the admin office.
Okay.
So depending what it comes in, you can award just the base bid, which would be the maintenance and the site prep, to do the admin later, or if you're comfortable with the pricing or whatever, you would award the base bid and the ad alternate bid, which would do all of it.
So it could theoretically be two different companies doing both?
No.
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 Then I'm still confused.
So, so what'll happen is, if you're the contractor, you're going to give us a bid to build the maintenance building and do all the site prep work.
Okay.
Okay, that's going to be your first price. Your second price is going to be to add the admin section of the building.
So each company theoretically, provided there's more than one, is going to give us two different bids?
Correct.
Now I'm up to speed, all right? Okay.
Okay? Any other questions? We don't have a motion yet, right?
He motioned.
Thank you, yes.
He was seconded.
I'm a second, all right, thank you.
I was asking questions.
Right, I'm signing too. We have a motion.
This is why I have to clarify, you know, what motion is which, so I'm not voting on the wrong thing.
We have a motion, and we have a second that we authorize advertisement for construction bids for the municipal complex. We'll vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Five votes to the affirmative, we will proceed to advertise.
And just as a point of information, the board will review and consider all those bids at the July seventh meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have one request for a trash and recycling collection waiver. I guess, Todd, you probably know more about this one than.
Yeah, this, this property is not occupied, and I would ask the board to approve it to make it retroactive to January first.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, so we have granted the trash recycling collection waiver. We have a couple of large-scale burn permits, I believe we want to handle these one at a time because we, I think, have a question or two on the first one.
Yeah, the, I, let's, if we can, address the fourteen-six fifteen Ingham Road.
Okay.
Benson. I would recommend to the board that you approve that large-scale burn, because that's wood, lumber, tree limbs, so forth.
Okay, that's the second one on our list.
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the Benson large-scale burn.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, if no questions, we'll vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, that burn permit is approved, and now we'll look at the other one.
The other one, I would recommend approval on the condition, our ordinance doesn't allow anything other than wood vegetative type of, of materials to be burned. This picture's a little dark. You know, the lumber and everything's okay, but they have quite a few roofs up here with tar paper and shingles. And I would just make it on the condition that the roofing sections be removed before it's burned.
Which that thing in the front looks like it has glass in it.
This here is a sofa.
I was gonna say, that looks like a sofa.
I originally thought it was a refrigerator, but yeah, then I was leaning towards a planer.
Have the sofa be part of bulk pickup?
It can, yes. And you can make that part of your motion, that the furniture come out as well.
There's a fence, and all sorts of other stuff. It's gonna be a mess.
Yeah, this mostly looks like lumber. I think there's a total of, I think I counted three sofas, and then, of course, the shingles, so.
All right, well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the burn permit on the condition that the roofing materials are removed from that pile and disposed of in an alternate way, in accordance with township ordinances.
I will second. So we have a motion and a second.
Possibly a third, I heard.
Oh, okay. Well, that, you can take that one if you like, it's the second. And that is that we approve the burn permit for the markets at Shrewsbury, but no shingles or roofing materials to be burned. Questions, we shall vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, with the condition noted, we approve that. And there are a few pieces of correspondence in your packet.
And I did add one just today, thank you note from Bill Cox's daughters.
Thank you, Mr. for the resolution, so that's nice that they appreciated that, too. Any comments or questions on any of the correspondence? And that means we would come to the point for closing public comment, if there's anyone who wants to address the board. I don't believe we have many people.
More information myself, but.
Sure, one up.
William Richard, Slipson Road. I missed it before, I was looking back through the one Lime stuff, for the subdivision for the McCullough. Everything I found was just referenced to in subdivision, is there any way to find out like what the actual plan is and what's involved in it?
If you, if you send me an email and request it, I can send it to you as a PDL.
Okay, I, I get something for that.
Yeah.
And I, I guess the next thing I was trying to find out, when was the last and when is gonna be the next, like a comprehensive township-wide review of zoning, excuse me, there's a lot of stuff going on, there's a lot of requests for changes and stuff like that, a lot of stuff, you know, when I first moved, where I moved, I believe it was agricultural, and I've been twenty years now at Suburban Residential. I'm not sure what I can do with the property now it's being suburban residential. I enjoyed it when I moved there, being all farmland and sparsity behind around me, I felt I'm in the same position as them, is, it's not quite the neighborhood they moved into. So I'm just trying to get a vision of what's township vision for the next year.
Comprehensive plan is actually a Southern York County plan, we join with the neighboring boroughs and townships in it, and we are getting ready to pursue that. It's been delayed because of COVID, because we did get a grant, we used a facilitator to help walk us through that, and we got a grant to help pay for that. And it took us about a year to get that money, I believe it's just about the end, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
So we will be starting that.
We'll be starting that this summer.
Yeah, we'll be starting that in the next couple of months, it'll be at least probably a year-long process.
I just wanted an idea what's, you know, always look at a vision, what's your neighborhood's gonna be five, ten, fifteen years down the road. And it seems like the last five years has changed a lot more, the last five years than the previous.
We haven't really, shouldn't have been many changes from a zoning state.
Well, just seeing all the developments going in.
But see, we didn't change any of the zoning, that's just, that's, it's there.
It's there, I guess people taking advantage of it, and then I get the things that people come in and ask for, they get kind of told, well, it's a one-off, but.
Where, where are you from? What, what area is it?
Uh, Glen Rock.
Okay.
Slipson Road.
Slipson Road. We've, we've been pretty consistent on looking at the boundaries that are in our comprehensive plan. I don't think there are any plans that we're going to extend the growth envelope, like just speaking for me, but I don't believe you'll, I mean, we are, are certainly very dedicated to the agricultural history of the township and to preserving farmland and ag land. So, and, and we have plenty of room for development, so I don't think we're gonna see a need, just speaking off the cuff, to open that up. It's probably gonna look pretty much like it does now from that piece of it, the comprehensive plan covers many other things, transportation and trails and a lot of other things we're doing. But most of it is aimed at trying to keep our open land, keep our ag land, and keep it, as again, we do have areas that have been zoned that people hadn't touched to develop that they've come into, there's not a lot, you know, a lot of big development land that we select, but there's still a lot of infill in a lot of the areas out there. But to answer the question, we'll be looking at that and starting that process in the next couple of months.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand like how mine, you know, what's the benefit of changing the property along the air to suburban residential, where it's, you know, two, three, five acre lots? You know, I, I just, I can't envision myself developing it, but what, you know, what benefit it was to change it from that to suburban residential, that's just trying to get understanding of the big picture, that's all.
Okay. Well, we will be looking at that big picture.
All right, thank you.
You're so welcome. Anybody else who wishes to address us at this time? Chad, come on up.
Chad Myers, one-one-eight-two-zero, Lime Road in Freedom. I just wanted to extend it thanks to Mike McLean and his crew, I had noticed that he was there, you know, definitely not business hours, I didn't realize he slept there every night one night. But we can see the bridge from part of property, so I had noticed that he was in and out of, frequently at, you know, non-working hours for him normally on the shore, so we do appreciate that, I would sure appreciate it, thank you.
And I guess, did he do all the surveying and all, Todd, to set the?
He did some, we had Davidsons come out just to verify some things, because he wanted to make sure that it was, that concrete was poured right.
You could have taken English snack or something if you'd known, right? I'll bet you would have. Anyone else? I, I think it isn't that we, anything rezoned, I think it's just a property that had been sitting for years was finally, like, like Cam, like off the Campbell Road. You know, there wasn't any zoning, it was always zoned for what was.
Like, or, or it was to be developed off of Elm Drive, I mean, it's a farmland now, but it's not in a, an agricultural.
Right, it's zone commercial, I think.
It's been that way for years.
So any, anything that has been, been built on was zoned for that certainly longer than six years ago, because we haven't rezoned anything when I've been on the board, and you all have all.
No, I was, I didn't think so, I just.
The biggest thing that we've done is the, is the receiving areas, that's really been the only thing that's been changed in the last couple of years. And that was to preserve the ag zone.
Right, right, right. Okay, anything else for the good of the order from anybody? Or do we have a motion?
Motion for German.
German? I assume we're all in favor, or German?